Okay. I am calling to order the July, what is today?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. July eighteenth Committee of the whole meeting. I think we have a couple people. Ms. Waters is on Zoom and Ms. Cokely. Anybody else? Okay. Um. First item up on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. So have a motion. All right, Reverend Mack save the motion and Dr. French seconded. Any questions? All right, please go ahead and vote. Yeah, she just voted. It's okay, motion pass and you'll unanimously. Okay, great. Okay, um, next item is public comments to a we so public comments in person, Ms. Waters, I don't know if we're doing those here or you're leaving those from Zoom. My bad. You can, you can go ahead.
Do we have the list?
Okay. Yeah, we have the list. Okay. All right, Eric, you want to do this? Okay, just one second. Okay.
We have several people signed up tonight, I mean, today for public comments. Our first person at for public comment is Mr. William Runyon. Followed by Carmen Howard.
Good afternoon, Reverend Mack.
Good afternoon.
As resident veteran educator and declared candidate for this Charleston County School Board, I come before you today to address the public concerns regarding the proposed CCSD board policy to separate the district and board policy manual, excuse me, and charge superintendent with a direct responsibility creating district policy. Here in South Carolina, Article eleven of the state constitution states that the General Assembly establishes, organizes, and supports a systemic public education. In Charleston County, our legislative delegation has a long history of supporting our public education, inclusive of charging the board with the establishment of policy, government of the system as elected members of the community sworn to work for the people and with the people. This current proposal is unconstitutional as the board does not have the legal authority to defer its duty of policy establishment to a non-elected employee of the district. Yet again, as learned by this board in litigation in two thousand seventeen, when it attempted to establish its own salary, the community must direct its membership to recognize that only the Charleston County Legislative Delegation upon the passing of state law can provide the board this degree of authority, and today it has not done so for you. So I would encourage the seated members of the board to take this seriously. Please understand that the rights of the people want to be supported, and in the future, please set aside this opportunity at all costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Howard. Okay, Ms. Darlene Dunmire.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Darlene Dunmire, and I'm a native of Hollywood, South Carolina. I have a career spanning thirty-six years in education, school counseling, and I'm currently an educational consultant. I'm also candidate running for school board in District Eight. I rise today in opposition to the proposal in agenda item regarding the district policy manual and board policy manuals. It gravely concerns me. Earlier today, in a press release, I stated that it is essential that CCSD governing power remains with the elected Board of Trustees. The board governs policy and provides oversight and accountability. The superintendent acts as the role, acts in the role of a manager, and is both selected and accountable to the board. This agenda item does not demonstrate governing best practices, and the board chair should remove it from the agenda in its entirety. I'm here to ask the question, who's checking the checker? Where is the accountability? By transferring sections A and C through L from the board policy manual to the district policy manual, you're abdicating, relinquishing, renouncing your official and lawful duties as elected school boards responsible for oversight. If this is the case, then you all should ask yourself, is there a need for a school board? The agenda item gives the authority to the temporary superintendent. Again, who's checking the checker? I encourage the board to reconsider this change and to not move forward with such a bold and perosterous delusion of duty. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Skidmore.
Hello, my name is Barbara Skidmore, and I'm here about school safety. I have two students in the CCSD school district, and as a mother and concerned citizen, there's no more important topic than protecting our children, and there's no more important place than the schools. Children should feel safe in the school systems at recess with their friends and not have to worry about active shooters. There's lots of solutions that have been presented that don't seem to be working in our community. Some of these are metal detectors which do find guns, but they don't find active shooter guns. There are resource officers which we have found to be a positive police force. However, we've noticed with Uvalde that there were three hundred police officers present at the time, and nothing happened in a timely manner. So first, I'd like to thank Reverend Mack for bringing up two years ago, or about three years ago, the ability to do productive doors, and we have productive doors in this community and built in. In the community, there have been three doors installed in your community, and we've had great recommendation from your school district saying that they were perfectly, there was no sagging, there's a proof of concept. So I'm asking for you all to consider changing the COVID funds that you may have into school safety funds and being able to protect our schools and our students. You can stop the rain, the rain you can't stop, but you can use an umbrella to protect it, and these doors protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Manning.
Hi, my name's Caitlin Mannion, and I'm speaking about the R two P protective doors as well. As someone who has a mother and mother-in-law, who both in the education profession, and I'll have children in the school system in the next few years, it is terrifying to see how badly the system has failed. But one positive that could come from the allocation of COVID relief funds towards our children's safety. When I look ahead towards having children, one of my major drawbacks is being able to afford sending them to homeschool, hire a private tutor, or sending your children to your school with no reassurances that that school won't be the next Uvalde. Our children's futures depend on R two P doors and the support of men and women in your positions, and especially in Reverend Mack for championing these doors for the last few years. So I just ask you to consider those and think why not add an extra layer of safety to our children when they go to school? Thank you.
Thank you. Marcelina Stanford.
Hello, school board members. Today I come to you as a very concerned Charleston County resident and mother of four children that have all been enrolled in your public schools. And in this five years of living here, we've all gone through a lot, to say the least. So this new, yet not so new epidemic of mass school shootings is what brings me in front of you today. The hope is that in the interim, you can hear us and the solution that is being presented to you all today. Last week, I watched the Uvalde video that was leaked. I was saddened and bewildered by what I witnessed, the cries for help from students, teachers, and staff, the fact that even with armed officers present and in the hallways, they were literally stuck inside classrooms with no defense. Fifty-four minutes plus went by, and the officers did nothing. R two P is giving us something to help defend our children, teachers and staff, the ability to provide a truly safe space for them behind classroom doors. So board members, today I ask you, what are our children and teachers' lives worth to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Butterworth.
Hi, my name is Colleen Butterworth. I am a mother, a wife, and a teacher. I have worked in New York and South Carolina and for CCSD. I actually trained in this very room on how to hide from an active shooter. Many mornings when I go off to work, my husband will say, goodbye, have a great day, we love you, and he will also tell me, don't be a hero, come home to us. Setting all politics aside, we have an issue with guns and mental health. Unfortunately, neither of these issues are going to be solved anytime soon. We've made adjustments at schools. We have SROs, we have doors that lock, we have lobbies to get buzzed through. As we all saw in Uvalde, none of these measures are enough. If someone is already in the school, a lobby is not going to help. If someone has an assault rifle, one SRO is not enough. Fortunately, we do have R two P doors. They have been previously tested by CCSD. They are impenetrable, and they are available now. As a teacher, it would be such a relief to go into my classroom, close the door, and know that we're safe. We cannot wait for gun control legislation to catch up. We have to do something now. We need to protect our teachers and students. I cannot hear about one more school shooting when I know something like these doors exist and they can save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Jones. Angela Jones, Jones. Collette Bailey.
Good afternoon, school board members. My name is Carlotta Bailey. I am first and foremost a child of God, and I say that because my faith plays a big part of who I am and what I am in my community. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, a teacher's assistant here in Charleston County School District. I'm a veteran, and I'm a part of this community and your constituents. And I can honestly say that I have been praying for each and every one of you guys. And I'm speaking about the abdication of school board authority and responsibility. And because I'm a woman of faith, I've been praying, and the Lord spoke to me, and he told me to say, remember and remind them of who they are and whose they are. And I tell you this with the utmost sincerity, that you are wonderfully and beautifully made. You are God's treasure possessions, the apples of his eyes, and he made you and he formed you for such a time as this. And he's given you a great responsibility and authority to speak for the constituents and the family members and the teachers of this community. And he said, he said this, and I hope you take this to heart. He said, redeem back what is rightfully yours, your dignity, your respect, and your honor. Don't be fueled by people who say they want the best for our children, and you see that they don't. Don't turn a blind eye to what is wrong when you know to do what is right. And I am also running for Charleston County School Board, District Five, and I tell you, I have the utmost respect for you, but please have the utmost respect for our families. Please have the utmost respect for your constituents. And please do not vote yes for this proposal because you have a voice, you have power, and you have authority. And only thing that I ask and my family asks is that you use it wisely and be a good steward of what God has placed in your hands.
Thank you. Jody Stollings.
I'm Jody Stollings, CCSD teacher and director of the Charleston Teacher Alliance, representing over one thousand CCSD teachers. On behalf of those teachers, I encourage the board to decline seating their authority over the district and board policy manual. Why does that matter to teachers? Because the policies in that manual are too important to what we do in the classroom, to be under the rule of a single unelected official. That's no slight against any superintendent, past or present, most of whom have been outstanding, but future superintendents could very well turn out to be hostile, or incompetent, or prejudicial, or unqualified. That obviously could apply to school board members too, but at least we have the redress of being able to come forward and share our concerns with you and with the public. Would we have that under this motion? Not necessarily. The policy that permits me to come here today and speak to you publicly without fear of retaliation would now be solely under the control of an unelected superintendent who could change it at his or her pleasure, muzzling teachers and every other employee who works for the betterment of our kids in this district. That's just one example. A hundred are evident. Suffice it to say, we need a true representative democracy for our schools. We thank you for being that for us, and please do not pass this proposition.
Thank you. Michelle Nichols.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Nichols, CCSD teacher and assistant director of the Charleston Teacher Alliance, representing over a thousand CCSD teachers. On behalf of those teachers, I encourage the board to postpone the EL curricula recommendation until it can be properly vetted. The district's ELA task force lists twenty-two individuals responsible for recommending the curriculum. Every single one is an administrator or bureaucrat. Not one classroom teacher is on the committee. They may claim to have consulted with the teachers who were required to pilot the new curriculum, but did they listen? Not according to our recent survey, where teachers who implemented the curriculum told us it doesn't meet the needs of their students and doesn't provide foundational reading skills. Teachers also noted that the new curriculum put in place just three years ago is now being scrapped in what has become a recurring pattern. Some teachers were in favor of EL. So I don't know which side is right, but I do have some recommendations on how to better serve students with new curricula. Number one, give it time before replacing it with something else. Number two, avoid highly scripted curricula like EL that preclude teachers' ability to adapt to their students. Number three, properly evaluate the new curricula by regularly surveying teachers. And number four, best of all, allow schools the autonomy to adopt any state-approved curricula that suits the needs of their students. We can't afford to keep making the same mistakes. Deploying a new curriculum is like administering a new medicine to children. If you meant, if you implement it hurriedly, haphazardly, and without truly vetting it, you are, you are placing at risk the very lives you are called to save. Thank you.
Thank you. Portia Sisk.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Portia Sisk, and I have a nine-year-old grandson that's going to the fourth grade. Needless to say, I'm concerned with safety. R two P innovations and their protected doors provides another level of security that our children, staff, teachers, counselors, anyone can stand behind these doors and be protected against assault rifles. I'm asking for your vote today elect to put these bulletproof doors in all of our schools for all of our sakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Cohen.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Danielle Cohen. My husband and I have two children, one in high school and one in middle school. We love all the memories the schools have provided for our family and have a great appreciation for you all, hard at work, making difficult decisions for our families, for our staff, for our children, safety, education, and a functional environment for them. This is gonna get a little winded.
Take your time.
Which leads from my ask to buy time for our children and staff's safety. R two P protective doors will buy time for the well-trained authorities to get to the school and detain the active shooter or, God forbid, active shooters. It'll keep our children and staff safe. Please consider putting R two P protective doors in our beautiful schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna Bradley.
Hello, I am the mother of three children here in the CCSD schools. I'm here about your proposal for turning over more responsibilities to the superintendent. I think that's a huge mistake. Many of you are new to the board. Why would you ever have run in the first place if you're willing to hand over your responsibilities to one person? I think that you all tried to get your reimagined schools passed back in the winter. That didn't happen. Everyone spoke up. We saw what was happening, and it didn't happen. So now we feel like you're trying to change the rules to get your policies in line with what you want. Okay, so you're just repackaging the mission critical, which we've seen before as reimagined schools. So why would you hand over more authority to one single person that's not even an elected official? Okay, so this is what I tell my children, and I'm gonna tell you because it feels very similar. You can't change the rules of the game in the middle of the game. Okay, you want to change the rules? You tell everyone the rules before the game. Okay, not in the middle. It's not fair. Same with the R two P doors that all these parents are speaking out about. That's putting one decision in the hands of one person. That is so dangerous. I think we need checks and balances here. There's no democracy in this proposal that you all are trying to, you know, put up today. So please reconsider your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Skidmore. Okay, all right. So Kate Manning.
I think you're hitting new top maybe.
All right, these are on the list. I'm just going down the list. Okay, Scott Effington.
I think those are for the board meetings, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right.
So you're good.
Well, that concludes the list. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Did we miss anyone who's here to do public speaking at the Committee of the Whole Meeting? Okay, now we have some people for the board meeting. Board members, you should have the emailed public comments. You should have those in your email. Next item on the agenda is the Carolina Voyager charter school request. So we have some folks here from Carolina Voyager.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Anthony Holland, and I'm a school lead at Carolina Board to Charter School. And I came on board about eight months ago, and I'm here today along with a few others from Carolina Board to do two things. First thing I want to do is to say thank you. My mom always taught me to get flowers while you can. And school board, you all have some really good people in place. They took me, came on board about eight months ago. It really helped me out through a major transition at our school. And I have to say thank you to several of them, you know, from, although she's here, Dr. Eppishimer, to your, your teacher evaluation, Ms. McDonald, Ms. Rollins. They, these individuals stepped in and helped me to get acquainted to this area because I'm not from Charleston area and helped me to learn more about the charter school. As most of my work, my thirty-plus years in administration has been in public school sector. Also, another key individual, Mr. Olson. These people were just a phone call away from me and helped us to get our ship back afloat and make sure we're heading in the right direction. And I thank you for those people being willing to reach out and help us, and again, just a phone call away to help us to do what's best for our kids. So that's my thank you, the first thing today. And also, the, the second thing I want to do today is, we're coming to you to share with you that we're currently asking for help with the transition now of our kids into their forever home. We've purchased land off Beast Ferry, and we're in the process of building a new, new building for our kids. And this is, this is some good time for us. So we're there excited about it. And so far, things are moving along really well for us. The plan has been shared with Mr. Bowery, Jeff Bowery. He's working with us on it from the district. Again, another thank you there to him. And we're currently meeting weekly with our contractor and architect to make sure that everything flows well. So the, the second ask is for you all to help us because the timeline that we have set in place has a site work completion date of December twenty-three. And because of that, we're asking you, the board, to please grant us Carolina Board to Charter School a lease extension at the Sam's Building through June of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We might have some questions. Board members, do you have any questions for Carolina Voyager? Reverend Mack?
Yep. So thank you for kind of giving us an update as to how you're progressing in that manner. So, you know, we've been to this spot before, prior to you coming on board, asking for an extension and a request. So how can you assure us at this point? Because I believe you were at that point previously before with securing property and trying to build a facility, and that did not panned out. But however, you're in a new track now in securing a new piece of property. So with your contractor, how, and you indicated December twenty-twenty-three as a completion date? So are, do you have a timeline already laid out step by step as to what has occurred? When is, when is groundbreaking?
Groundbreaking is scheduled for January. The groundbreaking is scheduled for January of two thousand twenty-three.
January of two thousand twenty-three? And your new facility will be completed and ready to move in.
The site completion date is December twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, and you'll be completed within twelve months?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. And so if it's, if it's the pleasure to board, I think it'll be very important that we have a monthly report. I would suggest the board is amenable to that, that we have a monthly I would suggest the board is amenable to that, that we have a monthly report as that, as that construction or that timeline is progressing. And if anything changes, that, that should be reported monthly to us by way, so that we can be informed as to what actually is happening in that progress. Because again, we wanna make sure that we have adequate space for our students, even though Carolina Voyager is a charter. They're still our students, right? So we wanna make sure that we have a timeline in place as far as that's concerned. That's my only question.
Ms. Coats?
To clarify, I know that came out of, and Ms. Green, maybe you can help us. The reporting and updating, that was in the motion that the board approved previously to this presentation. Jeff, that's been approved already, correct?
From audit and finance.
So has that come out of audit and finance to the board? Because I know that's, the ongoing update is embedded in that motion.
Yeah, it was my understanding that audit and finance asked for that update and...
And we've already had that come to the board for a vote, correct?
It's here today.
It is in that mo, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, if we have any other specific questions for Carolina Voyager, we can ask those. Otherwise, we do have this as an item in executive session for us to discuss and take any action. Thank you very much and welcome aboard and thanks for all your kind thanks to our staff. Okay, next on the agenda is something new, student outcomes. So I'll pass that over to Ms. Herterick.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. It, this is, the background is in your board doc, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the provided timeline to begin the restructuring of board operations and strategic leadership.
Second. Okay, so Ms. Herterick made the motion and I heard a second. Was that Ms. Waters?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so Ms. Herterick made the motion, Ms. Waters. Second it. Does anybody have any, would you mind just giving a little bit of an overview? Because we've all been through the, the governance training and...
So we actually have Kim on the line.
Perfect, okay.
That can provide some background.
Kim, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I am a representative from the Council of the Great City Schools and this student outcomes focus governance process is really a process that is going to allow the school board members to focus in on improving student outcomes. The framework is built around six research-informed competencies that describe school board behaviors and the degree to which they create conditions for improving the student outcomes. The first is vision and goals. The second, values and guardrails. The third, monitoring and accountability, then communication and collaboration, unity and trust, and continuous improvement. So this timeline, this timeline is going to outline essentially a to-do list, a task list to move us in the direction of improving student outcomes. And really, as a board in focusing on our behaviors, our board behaviors and the relationship with improving student outcomes. Any questions regarding this framework or the governance model?
I have one. Hi, Kim. This is Cindy. How are you doing?
I'm well, Cindy. How are you?
When we first spoke, you said that by the end of the workshop, you guys would have done a gaps analysis so that you weren't laying a system on top or dismissing the system that you were going to be integrating it. Have you completed your gaps analysis between what the system has now in CCSD and what you're proposing to integrate into it? Or is this just take that out and replace?
We've not done a gaps analysis. No, this particular timeline is focused on improving, or excuse me, focusing on implementing the framework as we recommend.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Then let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you so much, Kim.
Alright, next we will go into strategic education. Ms. Herterick?
So we only have one item today, K through eighth grade ELA curriculum recommendation. Ms. Woody and Ms. Belcher.
Good afternoon, Chair Reverend Dr. Matt, Vice Chair Waters and other board members, Superintendent Kennedy. My name is Emily Woody. I have the honor of serving as the Executive Director of the Curriculum and Instruction Team for the District. Today I have with me Dr. Jerome Davis, who is the Director of the Curriculum Instruction Team, and Susan Rollings, who is our ELA Coordinator for the District. We're gonna go through the slide deck if to ahead of time with some information so that you could familiarize yourself with that. We're gonna talk specifically about a couple of the items there before we make the recommendation and also some time for questions.
Today's strategic video update, the whole update, we'll begin with the timeline of events leading to this recommendation. Focusing on CCSD pillar number one, providing rigorous grade level instruction for our scholars. And our theory of action is if we invest in high-quality early childhood instruction, a rigorous curriculum, an instructional support, and job embedded professional development, students will achieve at grade level. The roadmap to this adoption is as presented. Typically, we start with the timeline. A basal or student textbook is aligned with school system's existing curricula is adopted to support the teaching and learning of existing curriculum. If you look at the timeline, the State Board of Education has not designated a textbook since 2012. The next part of the timeline is CAGDIA, formerly known as Advanced Ed. CAGDIA recognizes a system of accredited institutions using research-based indicators. The impact of teaching and learning on student achievement and success is the primary expectation of every institution. Focusing on standards such as an effective learning culture, positive and productive teacher-student relationships, high expectations and standards, challenging and engaging curriculum, and quality instruction and comprehensive support and learners to be successful. So, and then, which, these were the two things that basically were the catalyst in terms of why we convened an ELA task force, if you, if you will, there to actually start a research on researching a high-quality curriculum. And we'll share some additional information on the next slide as it relates to this.
So in two thousand and eighteen, at the end of the accreditation visit, so as the report that Advanced Ed shared with us, now called CAGDIA, they'll be back in two thousand and twenty-three. And the expectation is those things that are red would be green. In our look for core curriculum, we consider these things in mind, making sure that the rubrics that we use to evaluate the potential options would meet these standards so that those items would be green when they return. Equitable opportunities. A learning culture that promotes creativity, innovation, and collaboration. A curriculum that is based on high expectations and prepares learners for next levels. Clearly aligned to standards and best practices. And the ongoing assessment system. Those things were not present according to the Advanced Ed team when they came. And we wanna ensure that they're present when they return the year after next. According to our policy IG and the administrative rule IGR, the first step when we look at core curriculum is to convene a committee or a task force. So in the winter of two thousand and twenty, we put together a task force of those across the district who have close ties to literacy or ELA. And earlier we heard that the fact that there are no teachers on this task force. The task force of twenty-one people met every week for five months. We felt it unfair to ask teachers to be gone from their classrooms in the middle of pandemic that often. So instead, to garner teacher input, we met regularly with the teachers of the year, the chosen representatives from each school to get the input of teachers rather than pull them from the classrooms on a weekly basis. Those teachers told us very specific things. We need a core ELA curriculum. That's what they said. We don't have one. People are doing whatever they want, whatever they think best fits needs, but it's not equitable. And when we mean equitable, we mean it doesn't give every child the opportunity to engage in high-quality rigorous educational opportunities. Secondly, they said, we want a comprehensive program. We don't wanna be mixing and matching things from this and this and this. Find something that's got it all together. Thirdly, they said, we need multi-year, multi-levels of support. Not a one-and-done at the beginning and then hope we can get it from there. We need those supports to be ongoing. And we need something that we will implement and that we will stay with and give us the time to learn it and do it well. So those were the charges for the ELA task force. We used an adapted rubric from the Council of Great City States. And I said, I say adapted because we needed, there were some local things that we heard from teachers that we also wanted to make sure were included as well as the items in the CAGDIA report. So the rubric we used addressed all of those things. I wanna take a minute because several of the members of the ELA task force are here today. I'm gonna ask them if they're here, if they'll stand. That group did a tremendous amount of work beyond their normal workloads to meet that regularly, to look at multiple options, deeply analyze, and come back with a recommendation. So if you're here, if you'll please stand, if you're a member of that task force. I wanna thank you for that work because, one, I think we all learned a lot together. And two, I think we're really proud of the work that went into to, leading to this recommendation from that team. So thank you to all of you for that work. Next slide. And so after five months of learning together and poring over ELA curriculum, the ELA task force recommended EL as the top option for an ELA curriculum. Acceleration schools began implementing the EL modules in August of two thousand and twenty-one. And in January, ten additional schools began the modules. And those are Carolina Park, Sullivan's Island, Charles Paintney, James B. Edwards, EB Ellington, AC Cochran, St. Andrews Math and Science, Springfield, Mount Zion and Lams. Those are the ten additional schools that joined in January for those EL modules. In April, we gave all other K-8 schools the option to join a pilot and begin in August of two thousand and twenty-two. We were looking for an additional fifteen schools, but thirty-three schools eagerly signed on to begin implementation in August. In August of two thousand and twenty-two, fifty-two out of our sixty-one K-8 schools will be using EL for their ELA curriculum. Next slide. All of these schools are ones that will be using EL module, or EL during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, again, we'll have fifty-two schools utilizing EL. Next slide. Thus far, the schools who have used EL during twenty-one and twenty-two only piloted the modules. This year, which is, the modules are content-based literacy. So it is, it's your, like you're reading and writing and it is content-based. This year, schools will implement the full curriculum. So in K-2, that's gonna be modules and skills block, which is the foundational skills. And so like I said, we haven't had a school use the foundational skills component yet. Prior to the August, all schools were still utilizing open court for their foundational skills. But this August, we will have, most of the schools will begin using the skills block for that portion of their K-2 curriculum. And in three-five, they will be utilizing some modules and all block. All block is an additional language and literacy block, which is, again, it provides some of that differentiation. So but with the addition of skills block and all block, our teachers will be able to provide in-class interventions for all students, both those that are still working to achieve grade level standard and those who are working beyond grade level. Next slide. Equity and instruction is defined as instruction and assessment that challenge, engage, and empower learners and access to standards-based, content-rich, culturally-affirming curriculum. All children deserve schools that foster their unique abilities. Equity is the foundation of the entire EL curriculum. And they really focus on these three dimensions. So the mastery of student knowledge and skills is when students demonstrate proficiency and deeper understanding and apply their learning, think critically, and communicate clearly. High-quality work is where students engage in complex work, demonstrate craftsmanship, and create authentic work. And universal design for learners, for learning, allows teachers to consider the unique needs of each of their students and design scaffolds that provide equal opportunities for all students to succeed. These three dimensions are aspirational outcomes of the entire curriculum.
So when you look at this in terms of the pillar, pillar number one, rigorous grade level instruction. EL education's curriculum is comprehensive. I want you to think about it's comprehensive. It includes the foundational skills, it's rigorous, it's high-quality, it's standards-based, and, and, and standard-based quality literacy instruction. And what more importantly, it focuses on grade, students learning grade level relevant content. Next slide.
I wanna mention back on that slide that we have several districts near us, Charlotte Mecklenburg and Wake County, which is Raleigh, who also utilize the EL, ELA curriculum. As a matter of fact, it was an article recently about some teacher preparation and there was a sidebar in the article that talked about Charlotte Mecklenburg's process for leading to EL several years ago. And it mirrors very closely the same process that we've been following. Also, there are several strong reviewing sources for curriculum that were used. When we looked at what are the options we're gonna take a look at as a task force? That's one of the places that we started at looking for the, but what are the options that are out there that are research-based, evidence-based curriculum? We were asked to provide some early data about the results. Those are difficult when the SC Ready scores for achievement are not quite ready to be, go public. So we had MAP data to use, which is our growth measure. And so if you go to the next slide, Maggie, that, that shows that in the schools, now the blue schools are the ones that implemented the modules for the full year. The green schools are the ones who implemented starting in the winter and their whole school implemented. And then the schools on the right are the schools that implemented in the winter, but part of their school, some classes, some grade levels implemented. And again, these are some of the early results. One of them I wanna point out is EB Ellington and the difference in their growth in a minute. Gonna have the opportunity to hear from Mr. Dallas, the principal of EB Ellington, about the impact in his school. But the results there. And again, not everybody grew. Not everybody grew as much as we want. But the pattern is that the growth is there. There are specific contexts and what we do now as a district is we dig in and we look at those particular ones. Mentioned earlier about teacher feedback. Every teacher who has implemented EL has provided feedback. They have been surveyed. That's an ongoing process. And we've already analyzed that to look at where we might apply resources differently in the fall in some of the particular schools. Next slide. To ensure that we were giving our, getting the, the voice of our teachers who engaged in the pilot with us, whether it was acceleration schools or the ones who joined in January, we did ask for their feedback in a variety of ways. Acceleration schools held focus groups. And for the January schools, we did send out surveys that we really encouraged all teachers, every, anyone who engaged in the curriculum to provide with us, to provide for us their, their feedback on what they saw and what they experienced. And so that's just the next two slides. And so...
That's why I wanted to make it clear too, that if you look to your, to your left of this slide, the next to the previous slide, there was also student input there. So we actually did focus schools with our students as well to get collective feedback from all of, all of them. Next slide. Here again, teachers, teacher input from the focus groups that we held. Next slide. So at this time, we're gonna have testimonials from our school principals. We're gonna have Mr. Dallas come up from EB Ellington and Ms. Henderson from Charles Paintney. Pinky Elementary.
Chairman Mack, Vice Chair Waters, Mr. Kennedy, and members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to speak very briefly about the support for the implementation of the EL curriculum. And I will say, it's really nice to see EB Ellington up there. You know, in the past, you haven't seen us up there that often, but trust me, you will see us there more frequently. When thinking about an EL, you know, EB Ellington was an early adopter of the curriculum this year. When thinking about selecting the curricula, it is important that we consider a curriculum that is not only inspiring for students, but it is also relevant and meaningful to the lived experiences that our students bring with them to school. The profile of a South Carolina graduate describes the knowledge, skills, experiences, and attributes that students must attain to be successful in college, career, and life. Skills such as critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, communication are those soft skills that must be embedded in any curriculum we choose for our students. Not only do we want curricula that do a good job of covering content, we must also seek curricula that promote authentic learning and that connects students' cultures, languages, and experiences with what they learn in school. EL, in my professional opinion, addresses all of these components and more. Students are actively engaged in the curriculum as a result of the intentional and authentic instructional experiences to which they are exposed. The volume of diverse texts available and accessible to students is beyond what we have seen in a very long time. Students are able to select texts with characters that look just like them. Culturally responsive literacy instruction is absolutely critical for the students to develop positive self-images, an awareness and understanding of the needs of others, and the ability to stand before a text and critically evaluate what is written and what is inferred. For so long, our teachers have had to cobble together resources from many platforms to make sure that they have everything that they need to teach. With EL, they don't have to do this. Everything they need is at their fingertips, all in one place, and that's a big bonus for the teachers. This is a thinking, contrary to what was said earlier, this is a thinking teacher's curriculum, meaning they have the freedom to make choices within the curriculum to best meet the needs of their students. Last slide, we would like to share two brief, two brief stories that illustrate the authenticity of the EL curriculum. In Module 1 of the Grade 5 curriculum, students are given a copy of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The document speaks explicitly about the rights of all humans to be universally protected. This unit was being taught during the height of the Ukraine crisis and the ongoing discussion about immigration in our country. Students were captivated by these real-world happenings and were able to make local and global connections around human rights. Esperanza Rising is a fictitious story written by a Mexican-American author that details the wonderful life of Esperanza until an uprising occurs that forces her and her mother to flee California and settle in a Mexican farm labor camp. Throughout the book, Esperanza experiences so many life changes, from that of privilege to having to assume adult responsibilities to take care of the family. This story actually resonated with so many of our Hispanic students and families. One in particular, a Seer, who went home and read this book to his mother. His mother came to the school to talk to me, to have everything, to talk to me in Spanish, but I had to have, you know, interpret it. But she was moved beyond tears to know that her son was learning authentic curriculum in the school. These moments happen because of carefully-selected texts and crafted moments of conversation within the classroom, which are hallmarks of the curriculum. These are just a few of the many reasons that I'm a strong proponent for the EL curriculum. We have a fundamental right as educators to make sure that we provide high levels of learning for each of our students and that we provide them with multiple opportunities to make relevant and meaningful connections to what they learn in classrooms all across Charleston County School District. Thank you so much. I look forward to the vote tonight and your continued support as we take a much deeper dive into the EL curriculum.
Hello, everyone. At Charles Pinky Elementary, we joined the EL pilot in January with five teachers piloting in 10 different ELA classrooms. The thing that impressed me the most was the growth in both our teachers and our students. Our teachers tried new protocols and strategies with their students that they would not have tried before. These were amazing to see in action. As students who didn't typically participate, were actively involved in class discussions. And one of my observations, I was able to see a fifth-grade special needs student who has always struggled academically and socially. He was able to clearly communicate with his peers using the fishbowl activity. I've spent three years with this student, and I've never once seen him participate in a class discussion, but the structure of the EL lesson and the protocols involved allowed him to actively engage in the lesson and share his point of view. This, for me, is the single biggest win of EL. I have seen our higher-performing students writing more, reading more difficult texts, and constructing thoughtful debates and conversations. All students regarding, regardless of their learning needs or socioeconomic status are given the supports they need to access grade-level text. Yes, all students read the same text within the modules, but students have the opportunity to choose texts based on their interest and their intellectual level during the all block. They have re, research-reading opportunities and independent reading opportunities. EL teaches all students to construct a point of view on an academic topic after diving deeper into the text. The other side positive is the effect on the playground that EL has with our students. Students are using it during a decent, using their discussion norms during a disagreement on the playground to say, I think what you're trying to say is, and that was, that was classic. With only the spring semester of EL under our belts, we don't have a few full year of data to reflect upon, but I would like to point out that my GRAS was one of the highest, was the highest at there, but we anticipate, and based on that, we anticipate SC Ready scores to continue to go up in our EL classes.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas and Ms. Henderson, for those thoughts from within the schools. So based on our task force work, from the feedback from our schools that have implemented, and from the overwhelming number of schools that have said that they want to implement in August, it is the recommendation of the district staff that you, put the actual words up for us. Thanks. That you, the Board of Trustees, approve the adoption of the EL education ELA curriculum as CCSD's EL curriculum, our core curriculum in grades kindergarten through eighth grade.
Thank you so much, Ms. Woody. I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the EL education ELA curriculum as a CCSD EL curriculum for K-8 grades, K through eighth grades.
I'll second.
Can I make a friendly, friendly amendment? Um, I, I would like to agree with all of that, but just ask that we actually take it to the August board meeting, not at this meeting. There's a lot of good information presented today, and I think the public has, needs to have an opportunity to be able to review that, and then we can vote on it at the August board meeting. I prefer to move forward. Okay.
What did you say, Lauren?
I prefer to move forward.
Oh, okay.
I'll make my motion then. So I'd like to move to approve the adoption of the EL education ELA curriculum, a lot of E's in there, as the CCSD ELA curriculum for K through eighth grade and forward to our August 2022 board meeting.
I second.
We have two separate. Hold on. So we have two separate motions. And Dwayne's going to advise the computer. Lauren, who seconded your motion?
I did.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you check the heater? The heater's blowing.
Above us.
It's getting hot up here.
I wondered why the heat was on. Courtney covers up, and they turn the heat on, on us in here. This is just not fair.
Wow.
Jeff, I hope you're, I hope you're having communications with someone that can fix this problem.
So while, while we're doing that, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I'd just like to make a comment about the actual results, really. To see North Charleston, and these are like 20-plus gains, right? North Charleston, Stonel Park, EB Ellington. The, these are, you know, amazing gains that has been made by each one of these schools. And all, all of the schools, there are significant gains in, in other areas as well, but, but those really stood out, right? In, in the gains that were made. So that, that is really a tremendous, tremendous movement there.
Before we vote on the motion, though, too, can we ask some questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
We should have questions. Sure. So, um, and I appreciate the presentation, but two things struck me, and unfortunately, because we're not privy to some of these conversations till you wrap up a finished product and bring it. One of the things you said was in 2018, we had an inequitable ELA. It's 2022. Why did you wait four years to come, to, to do this? And then the second question, because that just kind of jumps out. Why weren't you in front of us in 2019 searching for curriculums and asking for our support to get it adopted by the state? That it, it, that, that just seems like a gap. The second thing is, this is an amazing presentation of an excellent product, but we have products. I wanted to see why we would go through the shift. Some sort of gaps analysis. We, we, we come up with new products, and we just dismiss that anything ever existed before. So I have some concerns about why you didn't address what you have and why this is better. You just came in and said, this is the greatest thing since 2021, when it came to South Carolina, and my God, what are we doing before 2021?
So we have two core, core curriculum adoptions that have happened since Cognia was here. And we led with math because the math data at the time showed that we needed to address that first. In elementary school, you've got teachers who teach both, and there is this change management. How much can a teacher change? How much change can they handle? So we went with math first. COVID helped us. Didn't help us. It hindered movement on that second core curriculum. The standards have changed.
If I'm going to pass out if we don't do something about this heat.
The standards, the ELA standards in South Carolina.
I apologize.
Please, please let Ms. Woody finish her.
ELA standards in South Carolina, since 2012, when there was the last state adoption, they've changed once, and they're about, and, and they're in motion of changing again because the research says some different things. So that's one of the reasons that this, we actually thought the state may move faster, and we now can't wait, is what we've decided is why we moved when we did. But we worked on the math bridges work first, and that's why we weren't in front of you right away with that. We did come with the math right away, and then at the ELA, as we felt like the math piece was solid and, and that the supports were in place to make the move toward ELA. That's the reason for that.
Madam Chair, may I ask one more question? I'll stay within my 50 seconds remaining. And what, just one point. If you scoop back a little bit, the heat is not pushing down on you as much. So just, just pointing it out.
So, yes. And, and I, I respect that, that we made a prioritization of math. So that is an excellent point, and I respect that. So why this curriculum versus any other one allowed in South Carolina? I, I'm still looking, I know we, I, I, I don't doubt that this is a great curriculum. The problem is, I don't know that it's greater than the other ones because no one's given us any indication of why this versus the other. I know you spent a lot of time studying this one, but why didn't you spend a lot of time studying the other one? Just.
We actually did take a look at six core curriculum as a task force.
And so can you address some of that? It wasn't in your presentation.
So, so, sure. So one of those curriculum that we looked at was not comprehensive. So we would have had to still do a foundational skills piece from another vendor. So that was one of the reasons for that. A second one, in the end, the differentiation intervention piece was not as strong as what we see in the EL piece. The state has not made any recommendations except for the PLP schools, and EL was one of those. Some of the other that we looked at were not approved for those Palmetto Literacy Project schools. So we were looking for a match for the two because we really believe that one core curriculum is the best way to ensure equitable support and equitable opportunities for all students across this district. As soon as we go to multiple, we inherently bake in some inequities. And so we feel very strongly about the one. So we actually did, like I said, look at six of those, used, applied that rubric from the, the adapted one from the Great City of Council of Great City Schools and use it for all of the curriculum options that we looked at.
There's also two nationally-recognized curriculum reviewers that are commonly used when making these decisions. One is based out of the state of Louisiana, which was ahead of most states in terms of curriculum adoption, called the Louisiana Achieves. The other is Ed Reports, both of which rate curriculum on a variety of functions. All the curriculum that we looked at, among the six or so, were, most of them were highly rated. One, one was not, but we had already used some of it, so we were trying to judge that. So I, I would also say, I think it's possible that any of those six curricula would be appropriate. Curricula, as Dr. Williams has taught me over and over again, is not the secret sauce for everything, but it's the important high minimum standard from which then we have to also do a lot of work still around better serving our English language learners, our special needs students, and figuring out the right strategy for reading intervention. I think our hope is that we have a stronger core, we'll need less reading intervention, but we all know some kids still do struggle with reading, and something will have to be done to accommodate that. So there's still work ahead to get to Mr. Kennedy's goal of having everyone read by 2027 on the, on grade level.
So. How do you feel about this being put on the next agenda and being in the public arena for two weeks?
I, I think that's up to the board to decide.
I have a question.
Frasier?
Yes. My question to you is, what is the cost to the district for this new curricula? And, um, is it heavy on phonics? Because the research shows that with our African-American students, that they tend to do better if there's a phonics-based curriculum in place. My other issue right, right here is that this is like a one-size-fits-all kind of implementation, and I understand that you did not include teachers in the process. And I think that's most important because some teachers complained that we're trying to implement something that we had no input as to how effective it's going to be for all of our students. The other issue I want to bring is that you couldn't find another place other than Charlotte and Raleigh to compare that's closer to our demographics. And I guess I'm throwing out a lot of information, but I'm trying to get some clarification on why is this the best fit for Charleston kind of schools when we have spent millions and millions of dollars over a period of time, and still Johnny can't read? And is this the answer? Because certainly, we have waited long enough for all of our children to start reading on grade level.
Dr. Fraser, I think my first reaction is, yes, we do believe this is the right answer. It's what the work of that task force led to. The teacher input was part of it, just not in that, on that task force, but with the teachers of the year round table, there was significant teacher input. When we use say phonics, that also translates to the foundational skills part. Yes, that's the part that Susan referenced, is that this year, we use, we stuck with the open court foundational skills package. Honestly, that was an attempt to minimize how much change teachers would have to manage. The pilot teaches us some things, and what we've learned is that it is actually a better practice to go ahead and implement both halves together, and most of our schools coming on in August will be doing that. So the foundational skills or phonics piece is a critical part of this curriculum that will be implemented. I don't know the exact price tag. Yes, there are going to be materials. Yes, there are going to be supports that come from the vendor. So there is, there is a cost to it. Why change is because what we've been doing isn't working. It just plain and simple isn't. And what the state had approved with the two curricula that we had, it, it's not research-based anymore. Those are from 10 years ago, and so current research was used to decide on this option for the curriculum.
And this option heavily relies on consultants coming in to work with our faculty and staff. Is that correct?
So the company themselves, EL, will be providing the initial training and ongoing, just as teachers had asked. So it's, and then, and then the school-based instructional coach and the school leadership team will eventually take over the support of that work. But initially, yes, they are the experts, so of course we want to use them to help us do it well.
And I can answer a couple of the other questions. We asked for $10 million in Essar for the full EL implementation, which the board has already approved. That's the purchase of trade books. which the board has already approved. That's the purchase of trade books. Because it's not a textbooks based, it's based on novels as well as the professional development that's provided by EL. So that's in there. Some of our, that cost is coming down because the state is subsidizing the Palmetto Literacy Project schools and paying for EL in those schools. You did ask a question, ma'am, about Charlotte and Raleigh. Charlotte and Raleigh reflect the racial diversity and socioeconomic diversity of this community. But the challenge is actually that North Carolina has not given its state tests in the last two years. So we couldn't get recent data to compare. It also has been piloted with very strong results in the city of Detroit and the community of Oakland, California, which are predominantly African American and predominantly serve under resourced or poor kids. There we do have studies and we can share that information with the board in a follow up.
And Dr. Frazier, I would also add, although Raleigh and Charlotte are geographically closer to us, we did spend some time with the folks in Mississippi, specifically with Dr. Wright, who was the until last month, she was the Secretary of Education for the state of Mississippi. And when she arrived there in 2014, the state of Mississippi's children were 50th in the nation of reading. Currently, they are now 35th. They do have on their approval list statewide, the EL curriculum. We also spent some time with the Deputy Superintendent of Jackson, Mississippi, and what they're doing in specific school districts. And he, Dr. Thomas, excuse me, Dr. Comack, has been very instrumental in the work in Mississippi throughout the state of Mississippi and in Jackson in improving student outcomes and reading from, again, 50th in the nation to 35th.
Thank you. Ms. Darby.
I just want to make it clear, I am not at all saying we shouldn't support this curriculum. But I, I think that based on the fact that there are a number of components that have not been piloted yet. I mean, we've been piloting this past year that we ought to give, you know, the opportunity for public and teachers to get some input before we present it at the August board meeting. Couple of questions. One thing that I've asked about, and I don't know that I completely understand yet is, and Ms. Woody, you talked about the strength of the intervention and differentiation. We know we have lots of kids, about half of our kids, that are not reading on grade level. My understanding is that EL promotes really only grade level text. So what is, what are our interventions going to be? What does that look like for students who are not reading on grade level?
So Ms. Darby, the best approach to intervention is the differentiation in the classroom. That often happens in elementary schools in what we call the small group time.
Right.
Or you can have children at the teacher table directly interacting and then students doing meaningful, related, connecting work in the other small groups. That work comes in the skills block and in the all block, the portion that we have not implemented yet. But even in the modules pieces, the texts themselves, as Mr. Dallas and Ms. Henderson mentioned, there is that piece of differentiation, which is the intervention piece. So it's a little different model than we have in Charleston currently. Intervention here has, has often meant the child goes somewhere else. And part of what we were looking to do with this curriculum choice was that intervention would be the responsibility of the classroom teacher first. Once that, if there still is supplemental or additional help needed, at that point in time, perhaps engaging with an interventionist or a supplemental curriculum or a replacement curriculum if need be. But that's, that's changing the paradigm here in the county to where that intervention in the name of really in the differentiating to individual children's needs. And as Mr. Dallas said, teachers have spent so much time procuring all of the things. And it's really an exhausting exercise. But that was why they were really loud about find something that's, it's got it all there. And then I can spend my energies on doing it well and tailoring it to my students' needs in a way that I haven't had the opportunity to do prior to now. So that's the thing is it does have it there. I think the most profound parts of it are in the skills and all block that will be implemented this year in the schools.
Okay. So I just want to say, one of the reasons we haven't had a comprehensive curriculum is since in 2016, 17, that any week, anybody who's been here since then knows that was done away with. So you're right, teachers have had to cobble. Teachers who have spoken to us have talked about how great it is to have one curriculum. So I, I think that is a wonderful accomplishment for us. But I just want to make sure, I mean, we know, and I think a paradigm shift is the only way we're going to get to where we need to be with the goal of all of our students reading on grade level by fifth grade. But I just don't want us to be unrealistic to think that just differentiation is going to do it for our kids who maybe don't have support at home, who are so far behind. That's, I just want to make sure we really have a plan for what that is. Because we, we have a pretty aggressive goal for reading on grade level. So I, I just think, I think that waiting until August for the board approve changes nothing for our schools and students. So 33 schools will still implement. All of the things we said they're going to do, they're going to do. It just gives people some more time to give some input.
Dr. French.
So first, I just want to ask, how will you measure progress along the way to make sure that this curriculum is working for all our students? Especially now that you're going to be doing it in more schools.
So unlike when we didn't have a real well defined core curriculum, this curriculum has curriculum based assessments built into it. That's one way that we'll know. We'll also tie that to our interim assessments that we will be using this year. So we have multiple measures of looking at that. So when every, when teachers were doing it themselves, we didn't have a way to monitor that well. With a core curriculum, with the assessments built in, that's the best way of, I mean, that will help us know about the progress.
Okay.
And there is a dashboard, there's a, there's a system that we can use where we can all look at that in real time. And so can teachers. And so that's another helpful piece to having a core curriculum like this.
I also have to give props to Ms. Woody and her team. She's being a little modest. One of the things when we did the math curriculum, when I first came into the district, I heard a lot of concerns that it felt like there were things called the fidelity police that were looking to make sure that the teacher were on page 57 of the math curriculum and everybody across the third grade. And we heard that because it felt like the district office was checking up on teachers not collaborating with. And I think the way that the EL pilot has been rolled out, teachers, principals and instructional coaches are key members of leading that effort. EL goes into the school and works with them. Different schools are making this change more quickly or more slowly than others. Not all grades have made the change in some of our pilot schools, and that was a purposeful decision. And it feels like we're getting feedback from the teachers. Like we thought we were being nice by saying, let's not overload. We won't make the phonics change first. And what we're hearing almost universally is that people want to make that change because it's more coherent to have everything from the same program and reinforce similar letter sounds in the reading books that you're using rather than have that disjointed. So along the way, we're learning in the field and doing regular observations to see how it's going around the fidelity and then stepping back with teachers and coaches around what did we learn this month? So it's less of a gotcha, more of a how can we do better? This school's doing really well. What does that mean for the, all of our schools? Let's capitalize on that.
Thank you. From the assessment you've already done, do you know if the students who are struggling the most are having improvements? Is that where you're seeing the most growth?
Ms. Haines is nodding her head, yes.
Okay. And, and I just want to say, when I was able to visit a couple of libraries in some of our schools, and I was at Stone Park, I remember conversation about the curriculum. And the librarians see our students over years. So they, and it's a story, I know it's an anecdote, but it was really compelling. They told me about a student who wasn't reading or writing at all the year before. And with the EL curriculum in place, that student was writing and reading his own writing and, and speaking in front of other students and had really become much more engaged. They, it teaches, it sounds like it's so comprehensive in terms of project work and not just your reading, your writing, you're interacting with each other, but you're also learning how to present what you've learned. And those are such amazing ways for students to be engaged, and I can only imagine encourages them to try harder to read.
We have one more question, Ms. Waters.
Thank you, Ms. Herterick. It wasn't a question, just a comment, just in appreciation to Ms. Woody and to everybody who's involved. For the particular thing that I heard that I really appreciate is that students are able to see themselves in the curriculum. It's immensely important for us to be able to see ourselves represented in texts that we read. As a black woman, I appreciate that. It wasn't often that I got that chance in school, I don't think, until I was in college, did I get to hear stories about myself, my history, et cetera. And I think it's also great that students and teachers can opt into what texts are appropriate for their classrooms. And so I also appreciate getting away from just a textbook where we have to be on page 54, as Ms. Belcher mentioned, and getting away from that culture of blame and letting teachers just be free to teach materials that fit the environment and the context that they're in. So I'm really excited about this curriculum and I really hope we pass it today.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Dr. Frazier.
I just want to make a quick comment, and I don't want to take anything else from the curriculum. But we all know that once we have in place great principals and excellent teachers, regardless of what curriculum we use, we are going to see our students succeed. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. Dallas, for coming forth and supporting this because I know what we have at E.B. Ellington is just an example of what we're going to see district wide in the future when it comes to our students excelling. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first motion for, or the second motion, which Ms. Darby made, will be the first vote.
Can you just explain technically what that?
It's going to be posted as a motion. Yep. So to defer the vote to August is the first motion that would come up.
To vote on it in the committee, the whole, to approve it, but not move it to today's board meeting. Just move it to the August board meeting, which we do that.
Not to the committee or the whole, but to the next.
And the second motion, which I made, would be to move it to the board meeting.
Today.
For approval, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of clarification? We, we keep saying in two weeks we would vote, but we don't vote at the COW. We would be voting at the end of August, right?
Yeah, the third week, yeah, for at our.
August 22nd.
But again, would not change any of the implementations, stop any of the implementation they're doing.
Yes. That motion failed. Yes. And may I ask a parliamentarian question? Actually, it may be because it's a board policy, not a parliamentarian question. Is this on our board agenda? Or is this something that you left open when whoever created and approved the agenda left a hole that said whatever items go to potential consent?
It's left open.
So it's not actually on the agenda. So if this doesn't pass unanimously, it doesn't go to the August meeting. Remember, potential consent has to be a unanimous vote. Or are, pull your policies and tell me what, what it takes to get something to potential consent.
It takes, it takes unanimous votes to get it to potential consent.
It could go for action today. So that's why I'm asking. So is this motion, how's the motion phrased? And she's saying her motion is only to approve. So if one of us votes not to approve it, it by definition comes to the, by definition can't go to potential consent. So we can add something to the agenda before four o'clock.
It's not, it's not, it's not on the.
That's why I asked that, Claire. It's not on the agenda. You see where my question is? Right. That's my question. So I can't find it. Anybody got a copy of the agenda that can help answer?
If it went to potential, the way the agenda is done, if it went to consent, it would be.
That's why I'm asking, is it on the, was it placed on the agenda for today? It is on today's board agenda as an action item. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir. No, I, I believe it. I just couldn't find it.
Post the other motion.
Are you ready for that? So she's about to post the second motion. So the confusion is when the agenda was published, it was not on the agenda. It's been added since then.
Changing the motion after it's published.
That motion passes.
Okay, anything else for SEC?
No, thank you, Ms. Darby.
Next is Audit and Finance Committee, Ms. Green.
I think it's. Okay. So, yeah, we are in the committee meeting. So do you have four action items and two information items that we will be dealing with, the COW on Voyager? I know we've had some discussions, some questions that have come to me about that. And so if anybody has any questions about anything, we'll certainly entertain them. Otherwise, we will deal with these at the board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is policies, Ms. Dr. French.
Thank you. The first item is 6A Policy EBBA Prevention of Disease Infection Transmission. So what we're looking at today is consolidation of some policies so that we are more consistent across the board. Policy EBBA is in the support section of the manual and provides language for how we are going to, to conduct our policy. GBGA, which is in the employees, the employee section, and JLCC is in the student section will now just refer to Policy EBBA, which will have all the information necessary. So, and then we're also looking to remove Policy ADD, which was specifically about face coverings because it was intended to be temporary and we believe that we can address this through regulations coming from DHEC and CDC. One thing I wanted to make clear is that this change is intended to bring the district back to a state of normalcy. Because before Covid, our district policy was aligned with DHEC and CDC guidelines for schools. And that includes multiple mitigation factors for preventing transmission of serious infectious diseases. So now that we're entering the endemic phase of Covid, it seems that we should continue to follow advice of public health officials. And as I understand it, and I'm going to ask staff to clarify, as of now, neither DHEC nor CDC require masking in schools for any level of Covid transmission. And although we do expect the CDC to update their guidelines in a couple of weeks and DHEC will follow suit. So did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Broy or Ms. Nitt?
No, ma'am. The only, the only thing related to what you just said was to follow on to say that we will obviously continue to identify risk mitigators within the schools to protect our students. So there is a lot going on besides just the masks that we're taking a look at, so.
Right. That ultimately, there are a lot of mitigation factors at our disposal, and that's one reason we don't have to mandate masks. Okay. So. Does, I'm going to go ahead. does, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, I would like to move to consolidate Policy EBBA, G B G A, and J L C C into the attached red line Policy EBBA and remove Policy A D D with Policies G B G A and J L C C referring to Policy EBBA. I know it's a lot of alphabet.
It's necessary, you did it well, you did it well, and it was necessary to put it that way.
And also to say, this is not to to change, you know, the responsibility of anybody, this is just how it has been in the past, and so we're trying to get it back into alignment to have more normalcy.
Second.
Thank you.
I have one question. Yes. And this relates to paragraph three of the changes. And which, the controversy of EBBA, the controversy of how we get, how we're getting to the next item with this original proposal for changing policies to the new one, setting that aside. The sentence in here used to say the district will continue to revise and update its policy and procedures, implying policies and procedures which come to the board for consideration. It now will read the dis, the district will revise and update its protocols and administrative rule. Do those come to the board for discussion and approval, Mr. Kennedy?
I think that depends on what happens in the item six B.
So if item six B, it does not pass or doesn't put those outside of the board's review, your, your staff brings protocols, administrative rules to the board for approval?
That's, that's not my understanding.
So that's what I'm saying, so setting C B aside, we don't bring regs to the board for approval, do we?
We do not.
So if this passes, this doesn't come to the board regardless of our next item, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that change.
Right, the EBBA are is an administrative rule and does, administrative rules do not come to the board.
Thank you.
So does anyone have any, anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to call for the vote.
Oh, I forgot, sorry.
I was on the wrong window. Tell me what I mean. Uh, the motion passes six to three. And so we'll move along to the next item, which is six B, District Policy Manual and Board Policy Manual, so. Wanted to clarify some, a couple of things. So this agenda item originally had language that led to misunderstanding of the intent of the item, and I want to apologize for that. I want to make it clear that no one involved in this process had any intent to give up board responsibilities. We are working to align with school outcome-focused governance. And the Ad hoc Committee on School Governance Training has revised this motion to be more clear. And we've prepared a statement which Ms. Herdick is prepared to read.
This statement's also available on Board Docs because it's pretty lengthy. Uh, so why would we need this change? The purpose of the school district is to improve student outcomes, to cause improvements in what our students know and are able to do. One major step in that direction is for the school board to adopt goals that describe which student outcomes the student, the school system will focus on. Another major step is to redesign all of the board's work to make those goals the board's top priority. This includes redesigning how the board self-evaluates, how the board evaluates the superintendent, how the board spends its time during board meetings, how the board decides on the budget, and many more important decisions. It also includes prioritizing which policies to focus on, policies that are not monitored at least once per year or largely window dressings. If you say it's a priority, but you never check to see if it's being honored, it's not really a priority. In those situations, the board should focus its attention on the policies that it believes are most instrumental to accomplish of the goals and delegate policies to the individuals who will monitor them more frequently. This is an essence of the policy diet process, making sure policies are actually monitored and followed. How we need to pursue this change, while we make changes, is vitally maintain the highest levels of transparency and accountability to our community. To ensure transparency, every step of this process will occur in public meetings and multiple efforts will be available for community engagement. To ensure accountability, we will create both a monitoring calendar to clarify exactly when each calendar will be monitored and we will plan a review date in the future during which we will evaluate the effectiveness of the changes we have made. What we need to change, to align with our student outcomes-focused approach to governing, we are exploring the redesign of the C C S D board policy to develop a district administrative rule manual and a board policy manual. Any changes during this process will come to the board first for approval. The revised board policy manual will include four sections. Goal policies focusing on the direction of the board wants to lead the school system based on the community's vision before what it wants students to know and be able to do. Guardrail policies focusing on the protections the board will put in place regarding unacceptable circumstances based on the values of the community. Three, delegation policies, which would describe the board's cascading of authority to the superintendent. This will include the extent and nature of delegation and delegation evaluation. Four, governing policies which focus on the board roles, board member roles, and how board members conduct themselves. This will be inclusive of current policy manual, section B. Again, this is on Board Docs. So following that, I'd like to make a motion for the development of the District Administrative Rule Manual will, will include a board-led review of sections A and C through L of the current board policy manual to determine what policies need to be migrated to the delegation of governing sections of the board policy manual, as well as which policies the board is legally required to retain in its manual. This recommendation includes that the first step of the review process be handled by the superintendent to make recommendations for the board's review. Once developed and approved, manuals shall be available to the public through the district website and Board Docs.
Ms. Herdick, I'd like to second and ask a question, or not ask a question, but make a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Waters.
Um, to follow up on that, I did want to address something that came up a couple of times this afternoon in public comments about the code, section fifty-nine, nineteen ninety. Section three mentions that the board is responsible for promulgating rules and regulations. Everything that follows that has to do with student performance, it has to do with student behavior, it has to do with student outcomes. So this shift that we're making is not, as it's been said, an abdication of responsibility, but a decision to focus, laserly focused on what needs to happen, what conditions need to be present for students to perform well. Anything that ends up after the board-led review process being an administrative rule for the superintendent to follow will also be protected by the guardrails that come from the community engagement activities that are getting ready to happen as authorized by the vote to approve the timeline that happened just moments ago. This is a link. It's, it's, it's one link in a longer chain and they all have to go together. We get clear on the policy, we get clear on what the board needs to focus on, and that's following our responsibility to set rules and regulations for student performance. We have policies on the books that say things like, you know, it's the superintendent's responsibility to hire and fire principals, we know that, the superintendent knows that. And if we put a guardrail in place that governs how the superintendent deals with that responsibility, then we've protected and encapsulated that. And so please understand too, that this is one step in a larger process to create a structure around governance, which is the one thing we've never had before, we've had different board members, we have different superintendents, but nothing has changed for kids. And it's because the adults in the system haven't figured out how to govern and really focus on student outcomes and allow district employees to be the professionals that they are, focus on their jobs, and then we hold them accountable for outcomes.
Ms. Waters, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I think I'm still in charge of this part of the meeting.
Yeah, did she second that?
She did.
She did second it, and thank you, thank you for that, and thank you for explaining that, it was very helpful. Does anyone else have any question or comment?
I have three questions.
Okay, Ms. Coats.
So my first question is, I thought I heard, and I know in some very rapid discussions, that this would be a board-led initiative, but this motion says it's a superintendent-led initiative. Can we get clarification, who's going to be doing the review of the board policies?
The, okay, so the, it's a board-led review of these sections, yes.
Okay.
But the first step
Right.
is that the superintendent is going to review the policies and make recommendations to the board, so.
When will the board review the policies and make recommendations to the board?
So
We do have Kim on the phone.
After, after the superintendent has done this initial review, and I had, we, um, there has been some work to look at which ones have state and federal regulations, for instance, that gives a leg up on that work, but we'll have to give, give the superintendent an opportunity to allow us to tell us how long that's going to take to get that initial review back to us. So, did you say, Ms., the, Kim, yeah, Kim, did you want to say something? To help clarify that?
Hello again, everyone, thank you for the question. It is something that the board is going to lead this work, but there is certainly collaboration that occurs. Know that none of the current board policies will go anywhere without full board review and approval. Does, is that responsive to your inquiry?
Uh, not exactly, I'm referencing the motion and the motion says the superintendent will do the first step. I'm asking, when will the board review the policies and bring the policies to the board for? There's nowhere in this motion that the board does what you just said the board will do. I'm trying to, I'm trying to find out where that is in the motion.
This, it is a process, and I believe that the first step is to have the superintendent make some recommendations to us about which policies are more under board governance and which are more under administrative rule. And that, at that point, the board will look at that and, and review that as well. But the first pass of looking at that, I'm asking, we're asking the superintendent to do, so that we have something to review and determine whether we agree, disagree on specific policies.
Okay, and so then why are we disregarding policy B D A A and B G and B G D, which have had this embedded in them? We've had a policy on the books for thirty years that says we do this.
Well, you've been on the board a long time and I, I don't know why you haven't been doing it.
So why don't we, my, my question being, why don't we just implement those policies?
Dr. French, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It has to do with.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Waters, I didn't see.
No, 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 it's okay, I didn't, it, it just came up when Ms. Coats asked the question she asked. Well, actually, I'm sorry, not, not a question, again, a statement. Uh, I think the difference is that this motion authorizes the creation of something that the district is responsible for monitoring, because again, the point is, if we're not monitoring the progress, then we actually haven't made it a priority. And so if the board is going to be laser-focused on students, then the district has to be responsible for things like making sure that personnel rules are followed, for making sure that student and classroom and operational things, policies are followed, or rules are followed, so we're using a lot of terms, but the point is, the difference between this and that is there is currently no set of responsibilities that we are making the district responsible for monitoring and ensure that those are going well, and saying that the board is going to monitor almost exclusively, and we all talked about this, to spend most of our time on students, student outcomes.
So that, that's, and I appreciate that, Ms. Waters, that's the end result of the proposal that you're making, I'm just asking why we don't implement. We could do this today with Kristen without having to have all of this other stuff. We literally have two policies that say annually we can review these, and Kristen, as the liaison, has the right to bring those, including, and it says in the policy I'm looking at, provide those underneath regulations and administrative rules as opposed to policies. So we could just, we, we don't, I, I'm confused why we have to do this when we have it in place and just say, Mrs. Dr. French, you have the authority, exercise policy B G and B G D.
I mean, I can respond, but Dr. French, I don't want to step on your toes.
Um, no, go right ahead, but actually, Ms. Darby wanted to say something, so let me have, ask, see what she wants to say first.
So I have a question and then a comment, and I'm looking at those policies. I think one of the reasons that we want to do this differently, we have in the eight, in the, almost eight years that I've been on the board, we did undertake a process to, I think, do a policy diet and, and, and accomplish what we're talking about doing today, and we didn't get very far. So I think we're trying to work with the Council of Great City Schools, who has a, a, a system or a model that we can follow and, again, still keeping the policies that we think should be governance policy, so I, that's what I would just say about why we're doing it this way. I just have a point of, of just clarification, I want to make sure we know what we're voting on, because in Board Docs, the, the, that act, the motion that you made, Dr. French, is this second page, right?
I made that motion.
Yeah.
That motion you made.
It's worded slightly differently, but.
We wanted to make sure administrative rules, that the approval comes back to the board, it's, we're saying policy manual, but these things will have to come back to the board for approval.
And, and like that, so one more clarification. So today, we're not saying this part of the policy manual is the board's and this part is the staff's. We're saying over the next few months, or however long, I'll be off the board by then, I'm sure, when we're finished, we're going to work on getting a policy, however you worded it, policy manual.
There'll be a policy review.
So we'll work on.
Over the next six months, as Ms. Waters mentioned, this is a link into that student outcomes governance that we're aiming towards and restructuring our governing practices.
Right, and, and part of, part of the desire to have the superintendent leave this initial review is that the board really needs to do some work on setting goals and guardrails and working on community engagement to get us started on the right track of revising section B as well. So, Ms. Waters, did you still have something you want to say?
No.
Dr. Frazier?
Yeah. It's my understanding that any changes during this process will come to the board first for approval, is that what we are voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so where does the superintendent piece come in?
The last sentence of the paragraph of the.
He is assisting in the review.
The, this recommendation includes that the first step of this review process be handled by the superintendent to make recommendations to the board.
Right.
That's the sentence.
And I imagine that he's going to have staff like legal looking at that.
Well, I just think it's just so much that we need to put on, uh, Mr. Kennedy to review board policy and then make recommendations to the board.
So, oh, okay, so I will say, I have done a lot of work on, you know, a first pass that I ha, I hope will be helpful. And Kim, let me clarify, your staff does provide some help on this, is that correct?
Yes, and a part of the timeline that you just recently does include a policy review meetings monthly that we will guide you through.
Okay, will that work for you, Mr. Kennedy?
Can we just leave him out of this process right now until?
No.
The whole process has to land at his desk at some point.
I'm sorry, did you, is it okay for Mr. Kennedy to answer my question? Does this, does this process work for you?
So I'll be working with, uh, the, the consultants with Council Great City Schools around the town land that they have discussed and laid out that you all voted on. And they will look at what that process, how it unfolds over the next several months.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darby.
And I, I just want to follow up, I think Ms. Waters already addressed, addressed part of this, but I just want to make clear from the public comments that we got today. I, I don't think anybody, and we've all talked about this, we did a, for a governance workshop, anybody's intent on the board was to give away their responsibilities or their authority to the superintendent. I think we have a great superintendent, but if, if you have looked at the policies that we have now, there is a lot of, which, there's a lot of governance, there's a lot of operational, and then there's a lot of just straight law that we restate that probably doesn't need to be restated. And then there's a lot of administrivia that doesn't have anything to do with the board governing. And then there's a lot of adminis trivia that doesn't have anything to do with the board governing. So, that's, I don't want anybody to think we're trying to give away our responsibility. If you spend any time with board members, they love to have a lot of authority and responsibility. So, I think we're just trying to focus our time on student outcomes, that's the most important thing. We've had these, as, I'll just re-say it, we've had these policies for more than eight years, and our student outcomes have not significantly changed, and that's where our focus needs to be.
Thank you. Anything else pressing? I would like to, yes, I'd like to call for the vote, please. I just see a typo, but you can fix that later.
Yeah.
Frazier is considering her vote.
All right, so the motion passes five-four. And I believe that is done for policy section today.
Yep, so, uh, next item is other business legislative update. I was looking at screen, I should have looked at the audience, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kenny, thank you. For the past several weeks, the General Assembly and the Governor's Office finalized some key legislative priorities. One being the General Appropriation Bill for fiscal year 22, 23, and of course, the tax relief package that passed, because it was closely tied to the budget discussions. So the new funding formula, as you know, I know there was a lot of uncertainty about that, but I think at the end of the day, the effort of Governor's Office, the State Superintendent, and members of the General Assembly, with exhaustive debate, the advocacy efforts from the education community, I think we got a, a better product than what initially was discussed. The tax relief package accounted for about $2 billion of what was in the total budget bill. They reduced the core, I mean, the income tax rate, the, uh, they gave a tax rebate, and they also reduced property taxes on, for manufacturers from 9.9% to 6%, which is, and they held harmless to school districts and, uh, local governments. In terms of the funding proposal, I think you all know about that, so if you have any questions for me about the new funding formula, please, please, uh, interrupt me, and you can ask those questions. But I, I think again, that, that final product turned out, uh, to be pretty good. At the end of the day, uh, there are several other pieces of legislation that come up with a comprehensive report for you. Uh, the, uh, S-202 passed and was signed into governor, uh, I think around the last week in June. It allows the governor and state superintendent, and a majority of members of delegation to, uh, initiate an investigation into a district, uh, to look at various issues that they see a need to do so. The school scholarship and, um, our voucher bill did not make it across the finish line this year, but I'm quite sure it'd be, uh, up in front, uh, center coming the next legislative session. I want to thank the superintendent for coming up, doing the funding formula change, meeting with members of the staff, as well as members of delegation and outside of delegation, and I appreciate all y'all's efforts too, and talking with you respective delegation members, and making that funding formula a better product than what we, uh, started out with. I'll conclude my comments and answer any questions, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Dr. Frazier?
Yes. I've had some comments from some of my constituents regarding our legislative report, including the fact that we are not making close contact with our local delegation. And I'd like to ask that we do that, so that we can have an update from them also.
Certainly.
All right, any other, any other questions on the legislative update?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Ms. Herter?
I just have some questions around proviso 1.97, we've gotten a lot of questions around that. Are you able to clarify, and that, is that proviso germane to the budget?
Before you go read that number, we're talking about the magnet school proviso, we, I think that's 1.97, but that's when you're talking about, right?
The magnet school SOA proviso?
Right, uh, so, we, we informed, we were there at the meeting, um, when the proviso was taken up. And so, that's, that's all I know about, it's a temporary proviso, so it's only there for one year. That's about as much as I can speak on.
But is it germane to the budget?
Is this the proviso?
Good question. So, I.
It could be.
You said, you said, what, you said what about the budget?
I think you should feel free to ask whatever questions that you have.
No, that was the question.
Was it germane to the budget?
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Provisos have to be approved.
So, so, so we have to implement it because it's germane to the budget?
Right, it's been signed in the law.
Because it's in, it's, they get signed when the budget got passed, and because the budget's one year, the proviso is one year.
Okay, um, so, could you, you mentioned some, uh, the, the new funding formula obviously is a budget decision. It was not a legislative decision. Do you see this being the same funding formula next year? What, what, what do you think in terms of districts having to start planning ahead?
I, I think so, i- it will be, I mean, it is.
It's going to get codified?
Budget discussion, it was codified.
Okay.
And, and so I, I don't see that changing, there could be some tweaks to it.
Right, but we're, we're not going to wake up next February and find out they went back to the one we had, okay. And you mentioned the hold harmless, but how long is that?
The whole harmless is for, for, uh, that's the tax.
The nine, yes.
It's 1087, so that, that's been codified, that's in the law.
Okay.
So districts will be held harmless in, um, with that.
Long-term.
Long-term for that property tax reduction.
Okay, and then one last thing is, um, when, when we got our final legislative manual, plus we know there's been some movement over at the State Department, I think it might be helpful if the board got, and, and, and I'm looking for Dr. Taylor, obviously, you could easily do this as well, but there are some various little pieces out there of things boards can do that will trigger requests to have us taken over, or requests to have our fiscal authority removed, um, and particularly the one with the inspector general. And because they're in so many different places, it might help us if we had that in one place. Is there a way, all those little things that could trigger?
Sure.
Because there seems to be about six of them now, including the fiscal authority question is tumbling around right now, thank you.
We can take care of that.
Okay, just, uh, just to follow up on, uh, Dr. Frazier's request, uh, there's, there's plan, and for the board's information, there's plan, due to Dr. Taylor's office, to work the delegation to try to get that communication going.
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much for your work.
Mission till January, bye!
Okay, next item is 7B, we do not have any agenda items moving to potential consent agenda, so we'll need, I guess, to give staff a few minutes to move those items, to make sure those items are in the appropriate place on the agenda.
And, so are these items moving to today's agenda? We have something down here.
Yep.
Yep. So I thought, um, so how is 6B moving to potential consent when it's not?
None of those are. None of them are going to potential consent.
So the thing says action items for consideration for consent agenda does not mean these are action items for consideration for.
If there had been a unanimous vote on any of those items, then we would have taken action to put them on consent, but we didn't have a unanimous vote.
None of them are going to consent, okay.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
I have a question for, I think Maggie, is there a new link for the second meeting, or is this the same link?
It's the same link, Ms. Waters.
Same link, did you, could you hear?
Okay.
Yes. And we can, all right, um, any other, anything else upcoming meetings, or, or, um, committee of the whole is August 8th, and our board meeting is August 22nd. So, um, how long, remind, how long until we?
Oh, we will begin at 3:45.
Okay, well, we're gonna begin at 3:45, can I have a motion to adjourn? The move, right, we're adjourned.
You need to, I'm going to be on vacation on August.
Call the July 18, 2022, Board of Trustees regular meeting to order and entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move second.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Are those joining by Zoom? Owen Maggie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Waters and Ms. Coakley on by Zoom. Okay. All right. Let's just please cast your vote. Ms. Coakley is on, yes. Okay. Kind of motion passes. Item one, see approval minutes. Is there a motion? That's our second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions? Hearing none, let's just please cast your vote. Not today. Okay, that motion passes. Item one, do you ask just please pause for a moment of silence? Let's just please stand with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. And Ms. Coates will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, item two A is to convene into executive session and entertain a motion.
So move second.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. All in favor, just by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Eyes have it. We will now convene into executive session. We ask all of those that's not a part of the executive session, you please excuse yourself at this time. And you'll be notified when to return.
Back into open session, item five A.
I move to amend the current facility's lease agreement to end June 30, 2024, at the St. Andrews campus with Carolina Voyager Charter School, with a monthly planning and construction update to begin immediately.
Second.
All right, just one second so we can make sure we capture that.
Oh, sorry. I know, sorry. With a monthly planning and construction update to begin immediately.
All right, that was moved by Ms. Darby and it was seconded by?
Ms. Coats.
Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? And we'll allow that to be updated. Just leave it to Ms. Darby. She'll change it on you.
I don't see it. Did I?
No, it didn't populate yet.
Oh, okay. What being irritated? I have two things in my box.
Has it populated?
No, I haven't got anything done. We haven't got, it hadn't popped up for us to vote. We could do.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Sorry, yes.
That's something, there we go.
There we go. All right, as everyone, please cast a vote. Got it. Item passes. Item five B.
I'm going to amend the current facility's lease agreement to end June 30, 2027, at the St. Andrews campus with Patterson's Academy.
Okay, is there a second?
That's it.
Moved by Ms. Darby, seconded by Ms. Hederick and Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Coakley? How do you vote? Okay. Cut out item passes. Item five C.
I move to approve the sale of the property and the transfer of the dehacked permit to the town of McCall.
That count.
Moved by Ms. Coats. I'm sorry, moved by Ms. Darby, seconded by Ms. Hederick. Are there any questions?
I heard that.
Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that item passes. Item six A is public comments. I'm starting.
Thanks, everybody. We have just a few public comments. I'm not sure if everybody's made it back in. First on the agenda is Barbara Skidmore. No. I think she spoke earlier. Next is Kate Mannion or Kate Mannion. Yeah, is anybody outside still going through? Start. Yeah, okay. Um, next is Scott Etherington. Okay, next is Sharlana Bailey. She spoke it between the halls. Next is Nicole McCarthy. And last is Lee Williams. Great.
One out of five.
Yay!
My name is Lee Williamson. I come to speak against the policy. As we move these policies to people that are unelected and move them away from our elected official, it doesn't make for good governance. We started this country with taxation without representation, and I think policymaking without representation is one major worse. We need to have our elected officials being making, making the policies for us and not unelected officials.
Thank you very much, and the rest of the board should have the written policies or the email policies in your email.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Darby. Okay, item seven A, student outcomes. Governance framework.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the provided timeline to begin the restructuring of board operations and strategic leadership.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hederick, seconded by Ms. Green and Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Good. Item passes. Item eight A. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the E L education ELA curriculum as the CCSD ELA curriculum for K through eighth grades.
Reverend Mac, I'd like to point out that as of 1:18 yesterday, that was not an action item on the board agenda. Again, we're adding these things at the last minute without informing the public that we're doing this to them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh.
That was Ms. Waters.
Ms. Waters.
Look up.
Moved by Ms. Hederick, seconded by Ms. Waters. Comments noted by Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote.
So, I want to make sure that it's on the record that I'm voting no because I believe that our agendas need to be appropriate and pure, and this was not on the agenda when we were presented it, nor was it when it was published to the public. But I support that the LA curriculum's going. I just think we have to follow procedures appropriately.
So, I think it's also duly noted to note that this was updated within the 24-hour policy.
Yes, it was 12 minutes before the 24-hour mark on a Sunday.
We're within policy. All right. But duly noted. All right, Ms. Frazier, Dr. Frazier? You voted?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that item passes. Item nine A. Is the 2023-2028 capital program, phase five, long-term debt.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh.
I'm going to approve the, oh, did you want to?
Knock yourself out.
I'm going to approve the reallocation of Morningside Middle School long-term debt funds to AC Corcoran Elementary School and Deer Park Middle School as shown on the attached resolution.
Second.
All right, moved by Dr. French, seconded by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Coakley, how do you vote? Okay, that item passes. Item nine B, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the projects on the attached list for, um, two fifty and above.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Ms. Coats and Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Cut out item passes. Item nine C is listed as information as included in your packet. Are there any questions related to the capital projects report? Hearing none. Item ninety is a monthly financial report included for information in your packet. Are there any questions in relation to that report? Hearing none, we moved item ten A, policy E B C B, safety plans and drills, second reading.
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Ms. Coats.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. French. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. That item passes. Item ten B is policy E B B A. Is there a motion?
Move to consolidate policy E B B A, G B G A, and J L C C into the attached red line policy E B B A, and remove policy A D D with policies G B G A and J L C C referring to policy E B B A.
Second. Well done.
Moved by Dr. French, seconded by Ms. Hederick. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote.
So, Reverend Mac, I have a question.
And reference policy and ten A, ten B.
Um, and we literally had this conversation 20 minutes ago. Why is policy E B B A and the district policy manual on the board agenda? If you could work with Dwayne on that, I mean, that was the questions I was asking Kate, who said, absolutely, these were not moving to the board agenda. I'm looking at the committee agenda.
Not the consent agenda. I said they wouldn't go to the consent agenda.
And we didn't vote for them to be on the agenda.
They did when we approved the agenda.
No, well, we, when we approved the board agenda, but I approved the board agenda because I specifically said these items are not on the agenda and they're not being voted to be put on the agenda. Dwayne, maybe I'm wrong, but do you see how the, I mean, if you look at the committee of the whole agenda? And then?
So, we probably need to clarify, sorry.
Go ahead.
We probably need to clarify in policy or somehow when we have a committee of the whole with a board meeting immediately following. Because most of the time, we'll, we do put it off to the next meeting unless it's something pressing, so.
Well, that's exactly what the board policy says about these, these meetings. And, but, I mean, it's just 20 minutes ago, this room was full of people who were told this was not a decision being made today in a formal board meeting and 20.
That's not true.
That's not true.
True at all.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. So, maybe I, I thought, I mean, we can always watch the video, but I was very specific. If it can't go, is this on the agenda? No.
Yes, it is.
So, it would be action.
Just one second, guys. Too many people talking at one time.
Remember the asking?
Hang on, one second. I will give directives as to how we proceed in the meeting. When you're asking 50 million different questions and asking other people for an answer or response, we, we are all over the place. So, let's, let's regroup here for a second so we can be consistent. Now, we're discussing item ten B. Now, Ms. Coats, you have a question for the parliamentarian?
I do. Dwayne, how did this end up on the board agenda?
Well, it was my understanding it was on the agenda for action. When you asked me the question in the committee of the whole, you asked whether it was going on the consent agenda. Only thing that's unanimous goes on the consent agenda. I said it can go on to action because it, it, it was affirmative. It was, the majority wanted to go forward with it, but it's still an action item that can be discussed in this meeting. Doesn't go on it because this is the next board meeting. And generally, it would go to the next board meeting after the college is two weeks later. But today is the next meeting because you have one meeting this month. So, it's my understanding it was going on today's board agenda if it was approved in the county.
So, okay, and, and while that's legal, I question the morality of it.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item is item ten C. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the development of the district administrative rule manual that will include a board-led review of sections A and C through L of the current board policy manual to determine which policies need to be migrated to the administrative. board policy manual to determine which policies need to be migrated to the administrative or governing sections of the board policy manual, as well as which policies the board is legally retired, required to retain in its manual, with the understanding that the first step of the review process will be handled by the superintendent to make recommendations for the board's review.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
May I?
Hope, just one second.
I'm sorry.
Moved by Ms. Hederick, seconded by Ms. Waters and Ms. Darby, are there any questions, Dr. French?
I was going to ask if I could make a friendly amendment to include the phrase you had in the committee of the hall, which was that both manuals would be public.
Yes.
Published.
Yes, so, yes. So that would read, once developed and approved, both manuals shall be available to the public through the district website and board docs.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I don't know whether.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether we need to include the fact that the superintendent will be working with the consultants, that this would not be the sole responsibility of the superintendent. For public information, do we need?
So, so we have, we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded, and we also have a friendly amendment that has already been accepted.
The superintendent will work with the consultants.
Hang on, I'm just trying to get procedural order in place here. So we have a motion on the floor that has been moved and seconded, and then on, after that has been done, we had a friendly amendment that has been accepted as well. So are you making a comment or are you asking for a friendly amendment on top of that?
Friendly amendment on top of the friendly amendment.
Really? Okay.
The parliamentarian, I don't think that's necessary. One, because the board, I mean, the superintendent has already said in open meetings that he's going to work with consultants, and you're saying in the next meeting that he's working with consultants, so I think it's been told to the public that consultants will be helping the superintendent with this endeavor. Because the motion was instructed, he's already told you that that's what he's going to do and the board is understanding that that's what he's going to do, I don't think it's necessarily just for the, the pop, the public to know, they already know because we're talking about it right now.
Are you? What's your pleasure, are you comfortable with, with what you just received?
You can ask for the amendment, I'll just.
I'm just asking for the amendment.
I agree. Sure, we can add that in.
Can it be specific as to which, I just don't want it to be confusion in the public, which consultants? Could it say CGCS?
Is that what you're referencing, Dr. Frazier?
Yes.
Or, it's handled by the superintendent with the support of the greater council of these schools, so great cities. Who will make recommendations for the board's review.
Okay, just allow truly an opportunity to gather those thoughts. Yeah.
Second by Ms. Waters and Dr. French.
Second by Ms. Waters and Ms. Darby. All right, you got it, Trudy? All right. Last that.
We're waiting on to populate.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, that's, that's, please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier?
Okay.
This is also great city schools, but that's okay.
Okay.
Oh, that's not why we're going. Ms. Green. Ms. Green? Okay. All right, that item passes. Eleven A is the upcoming meeting, our next meeting will be on August the eighth, the committee of the whole, and then our regular board meeting on the twenty-second, entertain a motion for adjournment.